And if I think we're ready, I'd like to call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for Wednesday, November 12th. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So I do want to just acknowledge that we received some sad news over the weekend. Vincent Dusick, who was Chair of our Beach and Rec Commission, passed away unexpectedly. And obviously, our thoughts and condolences go out to his wife and his family. Vince had also been a very active volunteer in town government besides serving on Beach and Rec Commission. I know he was also a member of the Exchange Club, a very, you know, big volunteer heart and loved Madison very much. So he will be missed. And I just thought if we could do a brief moment of silence in memory of Vince and his service, that would be great. So just maybe bow our heads for a second. Okay, well, thank you for that. And moving on to my update. I guess the big news, well, obviously, we had the election last week and was very excited to see strong turnout, about 42%, which is great news, considering it was the first election where our board wasn't on it. And I know a lot of times the first selectman race and the Board of Selectmen race is a big driver of getting people out to the polls. So we're grateful that so many turned out. Congratulations to all those who won seats on the different boards. Want to just compliment our town clerk and the register of voters again. First time we've had early voting for municipal. So that was also a big hit. I think they had a steady stream, you know, the two weeks really leading up to the election. So I think that also helped drive turnout, but well done. Also, just want to mention to the board that we will be doing another bond issuance in December. We've been on the cycle now. This will be the third one, I think, that we're doing. And this will be a mixture of bonds, long-term bonds, and then taking out bands, which are short-term, one-year notes that we use to fund all the different projects. So we'll give an update maybe later in November or early December about where we are on all the debt issuance, you know, and that whole process, just to give you guys an update. But everything's looking good. And so we're just kind of starting that process, Stacy and her team. And we've been meeting with our bond advisors on that. So that's kind of the bigger news. And then I want to highlight that we did receive four expression of interest for the Academy project. We've scheduled a special meeting for 5:00 on Thursday to review those and have a public conversation about them. And then we, as a board, will then decide how we want to proceed with those. I think those responses are going to be posted today, so the public is welcome to view them. I just want to highlight that Thursday's meeting is not a public hearing. We're not making any decisions to pick a pack, like pick one project. These aren't RFPs. They're not firm bids or anything like that. This is about concepts and seeing if there's something we want to take a deeper dive into and move forward with as a board. So just want to manage public expectations. But obviously, when they, I think they're going to go up sometime this morning. The public is welcome to review the proposals. And, you know, you can join us. It'll be a hybrid meeting tomorrow at 5:00. So just want to remind people of that. And with that, I'll hand it off to, you know, Liaison Reports of Selectmen comments.
Board of Ed.
Oh, go ahead, Bruce.
Okay, so yeah, just a quick, you know, I'm liaison to Beach and Rec. So just another quick extension of condolences to Vince's family. He, you know, he was active and his loss is going to be noticed. And speaking of.
Mr. Pickleball.
Well, he, you know what? He advocated certainly for that, but he also advocated for all of the different recreational uses. So he was, he was engaged.
No doubt about it. Yeah, he was amazing. Yeah.
Tonight, we have an important public meeting session at the Neck River School. This is to really begin the process of figuring out a long-term plan for the Surf Club property. Tonight's format, just to set everybody's expectations, is more of an open house format. There are no formal presentations that are going to happen. Rather, we're inviting the public in to, to come in and start to tell us how they use the park and how we might make that experience better and/or add uses that we currently don't have. And this will be the first of two sessions. After that, we'll make available the opportunity to input opinions and information online. We will pull all of that information together and bring back in more of a presentation form to the public early next year, the information that we've gathered. And then just do another round of, have we captured everybody before we enter into the planning phase of it all? So please come tonight whenever you can. You don't have to be there at the opening. You can come in and leave as your schedule dictates. The timing is, oh, I should know this. Is it 5:00 or is it 7:00?
I think it's 7:00, 7:00 to 8:30.
Yeah.
And then the one at the Senior Center is 5:00 to 6:30, I think. So we're trying to capture that, like both the parents and the seniors and after school and all that stuff in each of the meetings.
So don't feel like you have to be there at 7:00. You're not going to miss anything. If you show up at, you know, a half hour before it ends, you'll have, still have that half hour to walk around and, and see everything and provide input.
Yeah, and I just want to emphasize too, that Bruce mentioned that there will be specifics at one point that we can, you can weigh in on, like actual proposals. This is not, this is about getting feedback first before the proposals get developed. So this is not like a critique of any plans that the town has right now. It's a, it's a information gathering session. So. Any other, Scott, you had comments?
Yeah, I'm sneezing now, of course, you know. I should have gone first. Now I'm like nonstop sneezing. Board of Ed, just real quick, I was there on the 28th. It was right before homecoming, which was that next Saturday. They did talk about the hand roof in need of repair, and they moved it to year two in CIP from year four. They also talked about removing 25K per year in their maintenance budget due to Ben being in his position and the value that we're gaining from having Ben, which is fantastic. They talked a little bit about the new IT, the shared Director of Information Services, Aaron. So that sounds like that was great, replacing a lifelong, wonderful employee art has now moved, moved on and retired.
Yeah, actually, I'm glad you mentioned that. So I'll make a comment on that when you're finished.
Yeah. They did receive, the Board of Ed received two awards, which were nice to hear. One was for their Instagram page, for those of you that are on Instagram. And the other was for their policy website. So two accolades. They talked a little bit about the school calendar, talked a little bit about Neck River being under budget. And, and last but not least, saying goodbye to the Board of Ed colleague, Steve Penn. It was his last meeting. So there was a lot, a lot of love in the room.
Yeah, I wanted to highlight that Art Sickle, I know our board knew this, and retired his last day, I think it was last week. And our new technology director, Aaron Fliss, joined us. We'll have him at a meeting probably in December. Want to give him some time to get his arms around a lot. It's a lot to take on, but we're excited to have him. He comes from another town. So he has both town and Board of Ed experience, which is unique, I think, because it is, most towns don't have shared positions for this. So, so we were grateful that he was able to join us. And Art, just amazing, you know, person that had worked for the town for a very long time and well-deserved retirement. So, but thanks for reminding me about that, Scott. Any other updates? No? Okay, all right. Well, why don't we move on then to citizens' comments? Do we have any hands raised for citizens' comments? Please raise your hand online.
None raised.
Okay, it'll be an opportunity at the end of the meeting. Moving on to the consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, great. All right, and number seven is an update from our committee for our Madison 200, America 250 Committee. We want to welcome Roz Kama. And she's going to give us an update because we're rapidly approaching 2026. It's kind of like, oh, my gosh, I kind of was panicked. And I said, Roz, we need an update. Where are we on everything? So I know that they've been working very hard. We, you know, got the funds set up and we're going to start launching, I think, a way to, for people to donate to that. But Roz, if you want to give the board an update on the committee and kind of the calendar, that would be great.
Sure. So number one, my hand went up to my mouth because I usually use Teams. And the last time I used Zoom was yesterday. We had an interview with VCU and I've kind of had someone with IT change my background. So my apologies. I am a working person who's volunteering to do this. So, so I need people behind me is what it really means. So at any rate, hello and good morning. And I just want to say thank you for the appointment. This, everyone in town, whoever, whomever is listening, should find an opportunity to volunteer. You think you know your town and then you learn so much more. And so this has just been an incredible opportunity. It's given me permission to call people I don't know, learn about groups that I've heard of, but had no idea what they did. And so more to come. If you haven't, for those listening, if you haven't heard from us, doesn't mean we're done yet. It's a huge volunteer effort and so many good folks out there doing wonderful things. So this is my third presentation to the Board of Selectmen. I'm not going to be repetitive here, but for those listening for the first time, I am Roz Kama, Chair of Madison 200, our 200th anniversary in America 250, as we come into celebrating our country's 250th anniversary. The theme that our committee has formed is From Before to Beyond. We will talk a lot about our past, but we also want to illustrate the promise of this wonderful town. The last time we met, we talked about how we were going to represent ourselves. We are building our legacy on something that was here long before 1621 or 1641 and 1826, and that is the Rising Strawberry Moon, where a lot of our town activities tend to be around good weather, although we will celebrate all year long. So the Rising Strawberry Moon is our legacy piece and we feature it in our festivities. But we have three logos, Bruce, you had asked. Let me just say, we are not allowed to use the America 250 logo. It comes with lots of graphic restrictions. So we are giving our co-branded folks opportunity to use the town logo with an encircled bicentennial and From Before to Beyond. The, the, the big parties will happen through June and July, and we're going to play on the Rising Strawberry Moon. And so you see the graphic in the center. And then to the right is the Connecticut 250 logo, which also has restrictions. And we will adhere to those. Do I have control of the screen, Jeannie? All right, I'm going to ask you to advance. This is. There we go. All right. So just as a reminder, we were charged as a committee for the 200th anniversary to invite everyone, all in Madison, to reflect on our legacy and the importance of unity through a series of inclusive celebrations throughout the year 2026. So we've been almost a year now in planning. And although many things happen on the green and down at the shoreline, we are going to participate throughout the whole whole town. So we'll come to your neighborhoods. Next slide, please. We finally. Yeah, Jeannie, can you advance? I don't know if there's a delay. That's not me. There we go. So we, we finally took a photo of our committee. John Jackson was unavailable, but Ryan Duquesne and I serve as the public members. I chair, Ryan is our treasurer. We have a number of nonprofits assignments, as you can see there, including the illustrious Henry Griggs as our town historian. And then three appointees, Al Goldberg here being one, Board of Finance and Board of Education, all equally represented. And they all show up. It's a great group. I love this group. Next slide, please. Jeannie, are you doing this right? There we go. All right. And then.
Yeah, I think you are on a delay, Roz. Roz, just so you know, I think you're on a delay because it's turning quickly, but then you're waiting for it. So just so you are aware of that.
Oh, all right. Okay, my apologies. So we, we, we have this plan where we will throw a big party and then co-brand with all the local nonprofits. So we are building on four themes, history, legacy, community, and ecology. And I think we have a spreadsheet and we have equally distributed and have checked all the boxes. So if we were to stop today, we've done what we set out to do, but we're going to continue to engage as many as we can. Next. And while I'm, I'm waiting for the slides to change, I'll just say that we have met, and, and thank you, Peggy, with all of the Fourth of July Independence Day folks. So we are going to have a singular event on June 13th. Flag days on a Sundays, we're going to do this on a Saturday. We're going to meet at Lee Academy, invite dignitaries, have an honor guard, and have a Flag Day flag, historical flag display. And we will commemorate the signing of our incorporation. We'll talk about, you know, who the dignitary should be. We've, we've approached the governor's office. We haven't gotten a response yet, but, you know, I'd love to hear from you all, who you think should be at that. So that's sort of our somber, serious, we really did this 200 years ago and recognize all that comes with that. There will be a series of celebratory Madison 200 and American 250 events, then running through the latter part of June and into July. So on June 27th, we are working with Beach and Rec. We have the Surf Club on June 27th, and we are going to have what we are calling the Rising Strawberry Moon Festival. Lots to tell you about in terms of music and food and talent. One of the highlights is I have a committee right now working on a strawberry shortcake bake-off. And we are working on securing, we've been looking for sort of big name bands, and we finally, at the last meeting, came up with this idea of bringing in just local talent, people who have gone on to be great talent, both in music, but in other disciplines as well. And then highlight our youth and young folks. So we're, they don't know this yet. I came up with the idea, maybe we'll give a Madison prize. And so we'll start maybe a new tradition in a fun way. I can't help myself, so everything we're doing is alliterative. So Rocket's Roar will be a special firework that will go off, working with Madison Fireworks for Madison's birthday. So we will sing happy birthday on July 2nd under our beautiful fireworks display. The Madison Cultural Arts Council is going to give us a moment on stage to belt a birthday ballad, and we may ask for some folks to write a very special birthday song. The Fourth of July Parade will, we will be the grand marshals and be at the head of the parade with the float we're working with, or at least trying to get as many of the ecological groups together, including Madison Garden Club, to build our float out of the natural flora that we have here in Madison. And then a national initiative, which will happen at 2:00 PM Eastern Time across the country on the Fourth of July, is that citizens will be asked to ring bells. And we thought we had the Hand, Daniel Hand High School Clay Club, but something occurred and that isn't going to happen. So we're working to have handbells. We're going to see if we can get a sponsor and just hand them out and, and have people understand. My goal is to create a human chain along the shoreline at 2:00 PM and maybe get a drone to fly over. So fun stuff around, around the, the seasonal celebrations. Next slide. But, you know, we've committed to make this year long. So we've worked with a handful of nonprofits, those who serve on our committee, and, and now we're extending out and reaching others. So the Historical Society, you know, I have to give Marian Harmuth and Henry Griggs and Carol Stolz a lot of credit. They've really worked hard to capture the messages of our past. The Lee Lectures will be specific to who we are as a town and who the role Madison played as to who we are as country. And there will be three lectures, January, February, and March. Kleema is writing a children's book, which they will co-brand with us. Deacon John Graves in May 22nd will have what we're calling Tavern Toast, much of what, how messages were carried during our revolutionary period were done through, not through Zoom, but at taverns. And, and so we will recreate that fun and everyone will be invited. We started with, with just one nonprofit, but we have 13 districts in Madison, and it is my hope that everyone at every age level and every location can find something to participate in. So we're trying to find out the best stories, the best secrets that need to be shared in each of these districts and giving each nonprofit something to do. So we're calling them District Discoveries. My next door neighbor, who happens to live in the Princess House and happens to be from Switzerland, is going to fly over, family members who are in a minstrel. And as some of you may know, Summer Stock started on this property at Oakledge. And so they are going to do a summer minstrel. Joe Oslender is going to do tours of Rockland. The Mercy Center has agreed for the Neck District and so on. And so the Beach Comer, we're going to play the Boston District up during the Chambers event. And so we've got a secret about your neighborhood, please tell us. We want, we want to play it up and, and find a nonprofit who will host that. The Library is going to play on our, our legacy past with Silly Putty. So they're going to create events for children, stretching stories. They're going to do a historical escape room, and they're going to document oral stories. We're going to run a competition for a town mural, another legacy piece. We've gotten permission on one property. There are a couple of locations. So the Chamber of Commerce, Central Arts Alliance are, are working on that. We're going to try to put kits together for people to have their own neighborhood parties. It doesn't have to be through us to have a birthday cake. And so we'll work with our retailers to sell patio party kits. And then Al pointed out that this year on September 11th, in a very somber way, it will be the 25th anniversary of 9/11. And we want to honor those somber moments, you know? And, and we probably need to plug into things like yesterday Veterans Day and Memorial Day. And so we will reach out. And then our hope is, at the end, we will have a full seasonal soiree to give thanks to everyone who's volunteered and participated in, in some, you know, thankful way. So next slide. So as, whoops, go back one. As you know, we worked an agreement with Madison, Madison Foundation. So all receipt of money will go through the foundation. All expenses will be paid out through the town. And that coordination will go through those two organizations. The volunteers won't touch it, we'll just manage it and issue POs. And in so doing, Madison Foundation, you know, in addition to the town donation, made our first sponsorship gift. We haven't actively started. We're about to ask for sponsorship. And so I just want to acknowledge the Madison Foundation and say thank you. The next thing, so next slide, next thing is, we have a postcard that's going to go out. We have two things we have to do. We've established a festival website, madison1826.com. Now I need IT support to populate this. We'll have a listing of all the committed programs and we'll continue to build that calendar. Peggy's agreed to work with me, so I get, we get on town calendars. And then a QR code, which will allow the donation to go right to the Madison Foundation. But we're also going to ask people to volunteer. So, and what's on that card is everything that I've shown you in the slides above, but, you know, sort of our, our quick flesh out of what we're, is coming. And then the next, so you'll see that in your mailbox soon before your end. The next slide is that we've worked a deal with Tyco of Madison, and they're going to handle all of our swag orders. And they did their one-offs. We don't have to stock or create. So this is an example, the Rising Strawberry Moon logo on a hat and t-shirts. They'll run their promotions and then they will give us the money that, you know, a nominal markup on these to help fund some of these events. So you can see, we're looking at hats and t-shirts and totes, maybe flying kites during Flag Day, beach blankets for when we get our indigenous drummers drumming up the strawberry moon. We have lots of fun things and, and clearly bells. So, you know, any thoughts, ideas, we're open, but we're organized and have this all funneled in a very good way. The next slide, I'm almost there, don't worry. We've been doing lots. So on our website, we're going to have a place for people to participate. And we wanted to make it simple, and this is just some of, you know, my day job coming through, but two by two grids are useful. We want you to be a volunteer and a sponsor, but if you want to choose, we can break it down. So our vertical access, you're either a sponsor. To the right, we, we are going to ask for, and we're going to start to price up these events, but, you know, go to some of the larger local organizations or philanthropic folk who would like to name an event or sponsor it completely. But everyone, you know, we'd like to say at 20,000, it's only 200 $1, $100 bills. And so we'll play up the 200 denominations. But you can fund incidentals, you know, buy some water for an event or, you know, the printing of, of the judges' cards for the strawberry shortcake bake-off. So we'll ask people to give us some money and that can fund incidentals. And then we ask you to volunteer and either to host a neighborhood party or work one of the larger events, or join us, plan and, and build one of these venues. And so four ways to join and participate. At a dollar, you get your name on a list, and we'd love to have everyone in town participate. So more to come. The infrastructure will be built and this will go out shortly. And then I think this is it. So we're, you know, we continue, we're a working group, working in budget and work plan, assigning responsibilities, seeking sponsors, and now enlisting volunteers is the next phase of this. But I'm happy to say we have a wonderful program planned, year-long, big bang in the summer when we expect to celebrate. And I think that's it. I think there's one more slide and just says, I'm open to questions. So. Thoughts?
Well, first of all, thank you. I mean, what a great presentation. I know this has been a huge undertaking when you think about it, right? And, and. And I know it's evolving too, right? So, and, but it's, it's wonderful to see this kind of start forming now. People can start maybe putting certain dates in their calendars, a placeholder, get their minds thinking about creative ways they can get involved. So we'll work with, yeah, and we'll work more together with our communications manager going forward, now that you've kind of got some dates nailed down and things like that. So we'll work with, yeah, and we'll work more together with our communications manager going forward now that you've kind of got some dates nailed down and things like that. So I guess a question I have, and then I'll, you know, open it up to board discussion is. Are you, is, are people from the community reaching out to you about this? Is there, is there a lack of knowledge right now about this? Cause I've tried to talk it up with different nonprofits in town, but so maybe our first step is really a promotional thing. In December, like reach out to the committee, you know?
You know, I, we, we have a list and, and I think we've gotten most of the significant ones if we, like, there's a handful. That I've reached out to several times and we just haven't gotten together. And I think it's nothing more than, you know, people being busy. Or I've given them a chance to come back with ideas, like the library just got back to me. The Women's Club has had an idea. For a while and we're, we're, you know, sort of back and forth. I'm playing ping with the gardening club, but we're pretty close. I'm going to meet with Madison Pride. I've asked Mary Ann Conley. To please come forward with what the schools are going to do. I do attend the Connecticut 250 calls once a month. They have yet to come out with a curriculum. They will, and we will in fact. Try to married. So I'll, I'll put Mary Ann together, but the schools need to participate in some way. And I'm relying on, on her position on the committee to do that. You know, there. I'm sure I'm, there are people I don't know about and I'd love, please, you know, send them and I'll do my best. I, you know, try to make myself pretty accessible to at least see what works for them. Or to part, you know, like the district discoveries, I have 13 districts. Like it's, they could take on one and it could become, you know, a full. Fleshed out program then, and, and, and no one has to think very hard about.
Can you send that to my office?
Yeah.
Cause that, that might be something we could put on the website, you know, like what district do you live in and, you know, celebrate or, you know, uh, uh, cause I don't even know, like, what's my district? And is there a way, my neighborhood, I have a lot of old homes right around where I am, right? But I don't know what district that is. And. But I just say that would be a good thing. We can maybe put on the website too. So we'll, we'll get together and, and I think start populating and getting things. Moving. Certainly reach out to the governor's office. I, I can do a, a, you know, invitation to his office to see if we can kind of nail him down for that. I think that would be wonderful to have him attend the.
Well, I'll work with Jeannie and if anyone else wants to do the same with me, we have an Excel spreadsheet with all of this wrapped out. So. I didn't bore you with all the details, but it's a lot. So other questions, thoughts? Al's been great.
Down to the local youth sports leagues, you know, would they be interested in putting the logo on their uniforms for the year?
Oh, I love that. Hadn't thought of that. That's awesome. Thanks, Bruce. Yeah.
I have the Little League, I have the Little League president's rose, if, if that would be helpful. I'm sure, but they would, I'm sure love to put a patch on their arm. It's, it's an awesome idea.
All right. Love that. All right. Yeah. So if any, just help me, help me know what I don't know. Please, we.
Austin is on the meeting. He knows, he, he's going to know everybody. Okay. Maybe he can, he can forward you that information.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah. No, the more we get people, you know, we haven't wanted to talk too much about it because then, you know, it's like we're in the middle of planning and they're like, well, what is it? We don't know yet, but now we know. And so we'd be happy to now start shouting about it.
And I think to, 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 to that point, Roz, I think one of the things that I was thinking of as you were talking, I mean, you, you, you. You, you're the queen of excitement too. You're bringing this, you know, amazing sort of, you know, ambiance and aura and strawberry moon to, to the, uh, to the event here. But I think I always do my neighbor to my left, neighbor to my right test, and my gut tells me that they know nothing about this stuff. So. I think if I was to suggest anything, it might be a, yeah, it might be a communication strategy, you know, something that says like, you know, maybe there's like a teasers. That, that go out to, you know, on social media, maybe on the town website, but you know, it's a. As simple as, did you know that this is our anniversary or something super simple?
So we did have one article in the source and they've reached out to me. So I'm ready to now issue as we send these postcards out. The postcard hopefully will be catchy enough that people won't just toss it. They'll notice.
Great idea. Yeah. Stick it on the fridge.
Yeah. The committee approved the expenditure for the mailing. So every postal address in Madison will get one of those. So that'll be in the next.
Magnet. Put a magnet in there.
Well, we don't, it's an, it's a.
Stick on people's fridges. Then you remember it.
Oh, that, but I should know that from my husband in real estate. They do that. That's a good idea. I like that. Okay. Good.
With the moon, with the, with the strawberry moon on it.
Strawberry moon. I know.
So the, the, just so I understand the logo, if you, you know, you have one with the town seal and then the, the circle around it. And then you have the actual official, like by Centennial logo, which I, I love the before to beyond. Are both of those kind of official things that can be used or is one?
There's, there are restrictions around the states. As I said, the national, we're not allowed to use, which I find odd, but I won't go there. And the, we're going to use both the town depending on, and we're going to work with each of the nonprofits for what they, you know, you would ask that. You know, maybe if it's more historical, that it'll be the Madison one. And as we get around the more fun things, it'll be around the strawberry. And the graphic, as I showed you, I mean, I'm using my staff right now. They're, you know, just amazing. And so this idea. Of creating a graphic that makes something look cool. And some people will want to wear it. So we'll work with Tyco on, on that as well. And they've. Been terrific. So, you know, and I, I've got to give thanks to many on my committee. I'm not doing this alone, you know, Dawn has a lot of. Connections through the Chamber of Commerce. Ryan, you know, opened up a lot of opportunities for us. And Henry just, you know, just keeps going. He's the Energizer Bunny. So we've got, you know, lots of good spirit. Spread beyond, you know, the work that, you know, not just what we're doing in committee, but what folks are doing outside of committee. Laura with the library and keeping all our minutes and whatnot. So good working committee. Al, do you want to add anything? You've been, I think you've got perfect attendance at our meetings, always running to something, but certainly engaged. And then he thought you want to add to this.
Roz, you're, you are such a good presenter. I have nothing to add. The enthusiasm of your committee is. Quite unusual and I have to credit you for pulling us all together and keeping us moving.
Hey, show up. I come.
Peggy, I, I just had one quick thought on logos. Is there any way we could for the next year incorporate? In some of our documents, this special logo.
Yeah. I mean, we could have, that's what I was just kind of thinking along the same lines. Cause the, you know, just adding that ring around the town seal, I think is a nice way for the town to kind of. You know, it looks more official, like some people are confused. You know, this is like, you know, for town official actions. So I think that's something we could start like in January, one, you know, using that. You know, and our presentations, our documentate, you know, and put it on the town website. So I think that, that's a, that's a great idea.
And then I was just thinking, I would love if we could get some social media posts as well as teasers. What Peggy would be the best avenue for that? Should this be something that runs through the town's Facebook? Page? Could Madison 200 have their own Facebook page? What would be the recommendation there?
Well, I think that we, that's part of the plan. We'll sit down with, I think that we should be running everything through the town site. So that's where we, we're going to have a separate website, but the question is, is it part of the town website or is it a separate entity? Yeah. With the link. And then, and then the social media is the same way. We try to keep everything under one umbrella. We, we, we're, we have different committees over the years that have kind of set up their own Facebook years ago. And we're trying to pull those in. So we have consistency because there's also FOIA requirements, right? That we have to archive pages and things like that. And so that's why it has to be kind of under this umbrella. But that's something we're going to be sitting down with Rose and Roz and her team and figuring out, you know, how we kind of pull it all in together.
Okay, great. I'll just ask Jeannie to set up a, a meeting in the next week or so where we could just maybe map those logistics and who will take them on.
Yep. Yeah. And we do need to talk maybe too about procurement because I don't know if this is going to require some sort of. I think we're okay because these are going to be one-off purchases. So it's going to be under any procurement thresholds, but I just want to clear all that with.
We're trying to make it as simple. So for instance, if you want to buy a T shirt through Tyco, the money will go through Tyco. And then they'll forward whatever back to us. So we've eliminated the having every T shirt having to go through the town.
Yeah. No, I think it would work, but we just need to be, you know, we, we just need to get into it because these are donate, I guess. Well, I just got to think it through, you know, in terms of, because we have all these procurement requirements being, you know, government and. And so I think we'll be fine, but we'll just need to walk through the finance department also and think this through in terms of how the sales are going to work, where the funding goes, all, all those different logistics. So.
Yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, we end on zero. We're not, we have nothing that we are raising money for right now. If we get enormously successful, we can certainly talk about that, but we are a one-off. We dissolve on December 31st, 2026. And hopefully our whole can pay all our bills. And, and so we, you know, I manage big budgets. I know how to manage a budget. We'll be fine. But, and not overspend, but you know.
People. Well, I thi- I think it's more vendors, right? You know, like, you know, if you're a T shirt vendor. Well, I want a chance to do the Madison, you know, T shirts or the hats or, you know, so we, that's part of.
We don't have licensing, so I don't know how, will, you know, I mean.
No, that's all the stuff we'll talk sidebar on it and, and make sure that we're following those, you know, processes. So.
Yeah, we'll learn our graphics.
So I think the, any, any other questions for Roz? Great. And so I think the plan would be, we'll probably, you know, the next, you know, leading up to the holidays, get all this ironed out and then. We can come back, you know, January will be a nice launch period for everything officially, although I want to start rolling it out mid-December, I think. The calendar, like high, big dates, you know, and logos and all that. Have you come back in January and tell us how it's all going and, you know, give us an update then.
We'd like to secure some major sponsorship now in the next two months before year end and, and get at least some of these venues locked in. Because we know we have the money to do them. So some more to come. I'm in touch with most of you. So, you know, feel free to reach out. And, but Jeannie has this PowerPoint. It's all pretty much outlined where we are right now and we'll continue. All right.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate all the work. So to you and your committee.
You bet. Thank you.
So with that, then a very fun stuff to talk about. And I know Roz had kind of a tight, you got to get, hit the road now, right? So. Next item on the agenda is the creation of a housing trust fund. So I think Mark Edmondson, the chair of the committee is here. And I think we can also include Aaron Mannix. This is, you should have had in your packet, you had a memo from the committee outlining some thoughts. We'd had a discussion with them several months ago. And we said, yes, go take it a little bit deeper dive into this concept of a housing trust fund. This is one of the action items that was in our affordable housing plan. And so they've done some homework and research and came back. And so I'll turn it over to Mark, maybe to kind of walk through. You know, what they landed, where they landed on this. So want to welcome you and Aaron to the conversation.
Thanks Peggy. Appreciate that. And, and thanks for an opportunity to discuss this. I, I've got to say that, that I'm very much impressed by the work that Roz has been doing in our committee is just as an aside, that's pretty amazing. And I think it'd be pretty exciting next year. So I'm glad that Historical Society has been able to participate in it. This housing trust fund idea is one of the things that we've been discussing on the committee for about, pretty much about two years and, and looking into seeing what is being done elsewhere in the state. The issue of affordability is of course coming to the, you know, the coming to the fore across the country and especially with the work that's being done. I believe the special session of legislature going to discuss the, the new housing proposal is today and today and tomorrow, I think. So this is very timely that we're talking about this. The, I mean, Madison, as we discussed when we last met, has an affordability problem. We don't have a diversity of housing types. And as a result of that, we have people who are stuck in houses that they really don't. Bigger than they had, they actually need and, but really have no option to move elsewhere. And in fact. That is something that my wife and I are thinking about. I mean, we have a house that's, it's really quite large and there's two of us here and we're saying, well, where can we, you know, where can we sort of downsize and still stay within Madison? And the answer is probably not very many places. I mean, when you get past Legend Hill perhaps, and that's it. So I mean, I think this is something that, that will resonate with the town. Once we were able with, with the residents of the town, once we're able to be more public about it. The, the idea of a housing trust fund is pretty much of a simple idea. It's to say that the town will agree to set aside. Indefinitely, a, a, an ability to, to fund. Developers who are interested in, in being able to provide some kind of affordable housing. And we're talking now specifically about. Things that fall under 830G, but it also really kind of like talks about affordability more generally. You're not, you're not necessarily required to do that. And it's not going to be, we're not really looking at it from the standpoint of, of getting hundreds of thousands of dollars or millions of dollars into this thing. It probably is going to be fairly small unless the town decides to make a larger contribution out of the regular budget. But it will give us an opportunity to tell people outs, you know, outside developers that we one have a interest in, in finding more affordable housing that, that qualifies under 830G. And also that it, it can, we can, we can help you do that. Maybe pay for some of the preliminary work that has to be done, which is not going to be that expensive. So that they can make a bid, knowing kind of what the situation is in terms of the topography, as far as the, the geology of it and the hydrology. And, and all the other issues that come up when you're talking about building, building a, a development of some sort. It's not, it's not a, a, a solution to anything. It doesn't necessarily mean that. Somewhere's we're going to be able to have huge increases in the number of affordable housing units in town. It's not going to happen that way. It's more likely to be working with developers who are looking at market rate and being able to discuss with them, including some affordable housing within market rate. And I think that is probably the most important part of it is, it is highly unlikely that this fund in any way, shape or form is going to, you know, transform Madison in, in a, in a way. That looks more like, you know, some other towns or larger towns around. So I mean, I think it's not a, a. It's, it's this, in, in, from our point of view, it's really not a big deal, but it's a wonderful symbol for, and it is sort of symbolic that it tells people that we are. Serious about what we said in 2022, which was that we were going to try to increase the amount of affordable housing in Madison. And it's laid out as part of one of the, one of the options that is in that, that original plan that was approved by the board back at that time. So I'm not sure if you want Peggy and me to go through in more detail in terms of what it is. We, I think everybody's received a copy of the proposal. It's a very brief proposal. Importantly, we tried to put in answers to all questions like how is it going to be managed? Who's going to own it? Who's going to be responsible for it? But those are just placeholders. I mean, that's something that obviously we have to, to work with the board to figure out exactly and, and whether, how, how this actually was going to, going to work. But I think that in terms of the funding, in terms of how it's managed, in, in terms of where we are going, what we're going to spend the money on, it's, it's pretty, pretty simple and straightforward. So I will. Be ready to open a discussion on this. Yep.
So I know you attached the Guilford ordinance as part of this, which is pretty general. You know, with flexibility, because I guess the way I would see this. You know, with flexibility, because I guess the way I would see this is, first of all, there's going to be a process that the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to look into in terms of their regulation review. Whether or not there's going to be any kind of, you know. Developer fees or anything that might be part of the planning zoning process, right? They could help fund this. So that'll be a conversation. That if we decide we want to move forward with this, we could talk to the Planning and Zoning Commission about a funding stream possibly through that. But I see this as symbolic in the sense that we are prioritizing this issue for the town and then I see it as a. Mechanism for us to explore. Town properties possibly, right? That costs money. You need to hire consultants and you need to, and we are kind of doing that right now through the planning reserve process. I feel though this would actually kind of segregate some funds, allow it to sit in trust fund and earn interest, right? So there's different benefits to that. And then. And I have to go through this in more detail in terms of like to make sure that the board would then have the opportunity to say. We want to do a septic analysis on this parcel, right? And so this is kind of a resource of money, not having to use the planning reserve. That we could at least do some sort of that investigative type analysis as well. So, you know, so there's different pieces to it, you know. And then the board would have to make a decision. Does the town want to put money in this or not? You know, we've set up other. This is a trust fund, so it's all different than like, say, the code, we we've usually done it through reserve funds, you know, we did the coastal resiliency. Planning and we've talked about. Do we go that path versus the ordinance? I do think when it comes to housing. There, this would help us, I think, in terms of applying for grants and things like that, the fact that the town has this. That's why I think it's like a. Little bit different conversation because there's a mechanism we could do that would be simpler, which would be through a setting up a reserve fund in some way. Or special revenue fund. But this trust fund, I think that it might be viewed differently from trying to apply for outside funding. That that's the perception I have in. So I don't know, you know, if you have a different view or Aaron, if you have a different view, but. So that was my thinking on this. And so, you know, Aaron, I don't know if you have some thoughts. Having, you know, looked at the proposal so far, it seems pretty simple, like, right? What Guilford Guilford has done.
Yes, so there's the general. Proposal of establishing a housing trust fund. We haven't gotten into the specific language of of what an ordinance would look like. The Guilford example is attached for reference. Peggy, you're right, it's pretty general. I have some examples from other towns as well. Fairfield. Has a good one. West Port also has one. They're all very standard language. Most of them have the authority to the legislative body, Board of Finance. And the advising committee is the Affordable Housing Committee. So there's language in most of those trusts establishing the committee as. You know, that the board does have discretion to use the funds as they see fit. However, there are opportunities for. The committee to weigh in for recommendations as well. And yeah, the the money can be used for quite a number of. Expenses associated with either land acquisition. Looking at paying down rents for some properties that may be close to. Affordable at this point, you know, an existing housing stock that we have multifamily. It can be feasibility studies. Again, it could be any other ways of partnering with either a public or, you know, a private developer or a nonprofit as well. So there's quite a bit of flexibility. And again, the funds, you know, they may or may not be funded by the. You know, on an annual basis by the town. And I think that is similar to some of our other. Funds as well, you know, whether our open space, things like that, but there is that opportunity to have donations or grants. Deposited into the account. Also, if we look into, like you said, Peggy, inclusionary zoning regulation. Where that's sort of a fee in lieu of creating affordable housing. Or. What was the, oh, you know, an assessment on permit fees as well. And and some, you know, some of these tools work really well in other communities. For example, Fairfield takes quite an extensive amount of. Building, you know, fees associated with building permits because of the universities in town. And the extensive development that they have. So that actually works really well for them. Mark, like you said, we don't have that level of development, so I don't see that as a huge revenue builder. But again, it it does kind of set the tone for. The town's desire to move forward, creating housing that can accommodate. The folks who who are connected with Madison, either living here or working here, so. If the if the board were in agreement to kind of explore this moving forward, then I think we'll work a little more specifically in drafting. Ordinance language for for review. This is just the first step.
Yes, it is only the first, it is only the first step. I mean, that that is exactly right. I think the the next step would be to work together to to. Answer some of those questions where there's just a placeholder in terms of governance and finance, et cetera.
Any questions from board members? I mean, I I think it's worth taking it to the next step. I have some thoughts about. How we could structure this, you know. I think it could be a really positive force for us to encourage more affordable housing in town, you know, and it's a right step forward and it opened up some channels for possible funding. Sources as well by having the trust fund established. And the good thing is the timing is perfect, as you said, because we'll find out ultimately what the legislature is going to be requiring. You know, when they finalize this housing bill that is going to get voted on and and then we'll understand. I know one of the things is a fair rent commission. We might be required because of our size to establish a fair rent commission, you know, and does that tie into any way? Funding or assistance or whatever with this, you know, I want to just understand all that, how those pieces would come together. So we have some homework to do once that's. Special legislative session is completed. So Jen, I know you're the liaison. Anything to add?
You're on mute.
There we go. I was looking at the at the document. Spacebar doesn't work to take you off mute if you're on a different screen. And just side note, but no, the committee's been working very hard on this. Something that's been a big priority for them. So, you know, from that perspective, I think. It definitely deserves some more investigation from our part as a town, you know. This is affordable housing is one of our, we have a whole plan for it. It's a goal of the town, so. Question always comes down to funding, so that's definitely a big piece that we'll have to figure out, but. Committee's been working very hard. On putting this initiative together.
I I agree with Jen, Peggy, that. This feels like, I think you you put it, you know, this is sort of symbolic, you know, a symbolic step and a really positive sign. For developers that we're taking this seriously. So I think it's it's the right thing to begin to move forward on. I think, you know, I I. Sort of think, you know, Jen put it well, but it's a bit of an elephant in the room to me is is the funding, you know, is it public versus private, you know? How does that all happen? Is it an annual thing? Is it a one-time thing? Is it a? I I think there's a lot of open questions on how that works, but at least this particular process feels like a best practice to me. It feels like sort of putting the stake in the ground that we we care, we're serious about it. It's part of our strategic plan. And we want to move the ball forward in a positive direction.
I'd like to see this board take a leadership position on a matter like this. We've talked about it for so long and this is a way we can show that we're serious about this and committed to it. The one thing I didn't see in the initial document was what I call the exit ramp. If a future Board of Selectmen wanted to unwind this trust fund. Is it doable? Is it going to be complicated in terms of getting the money backed out and. I I would just want to make sure we're not handcuffing a future Board of Selectmen.
Al, it is, it is the the idea that this be a creature of the board that would be instituted by an ordinance. So I I'm not going to make a prediction, but I would say that. If you could create it with an ordinance, you can also dissolve it with an ordinance as well. What happens to the money is another question, you know. If there is any money, I mean, that's that's another question.
Money seems to complicate everything, doesn't it?
I'll jump in, I'll jump in and say that for me, it's it's not very complicated. I think. The, you know, for me to even think about getting on board. With creating another government entity is that that tax dollars, property tax dollars from Madison residents don't. Don't and are specifically prohibited from funding this. I. I'm not sure I could get past the irony of increasing taxes to make Madison more affordable. So if we create a fund that becomes a vehicle for. Outside entities, federal, state or private to to put money in, well, that's one thing, but. I don't think reaching into the. To the taxpayers' pockets deeper in Madison is is a good move. And 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 I think. You know, it's a bit of a tangent. I'm wary of of expanding the size of of town government because. Invariably, it it increases the cost. I also, and again, a tangent, so I I, you know, I recognize that. Having an understanding of how much development, we talk about wanting to increase the amount of of affordable inventory. Regardless of what, you know, how we name it, right? I mean, it's sometimes it's working class, it's it's ultimately it's deed restricted. Property, how much of it we want to do? And when we talk about town property. These, my understanding is these deed restrictions expire. After a certain amount of time. And how would we manage the expiration of what was a town property from its deed restrictions into. You know, a more market value. I think. That's an important consideration, but back to how much density are we increasing? I'm, you know. Remembering the conversation that we had from the wastewater committee about the. Limited ability of the ground to absorb. The 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 waste that we produce and increasing that density just exacerbates that.
So I think part of the exercise that, you know, the facilities committee is going through is looking at, you know. Parcels that could be developed, right? That, and that was part of their charge and that was part of the report that they gave to us, the interim report, that there are a couple of locations in town that might be, you know, more optimal for development. Because of the fact that we don't have sewer systems, we are capped, right? Or we we know that we can't really do anything more than thirty to thirty-five units, probably. I mean, that's always been the number I've heard. Although then you're getting into a much bigger significant cost, you know, for the project development, because now you got to put in a mini treatment plant and all this other stuff, so. I don't envision us being able to do large-scale development all over Madison. I mean, we just don't have the infrastructure, right? So this would be one one-off projects. If the town decided to pursue that. Or if you had a private developer come in. You know, it is so expensive, especially along the coast, to develop anything. And if you try to then have it be affordable, that reduces the profit margins, obviously, for the developer. So, you know, trying to find a balance where the town gets fills a need out of the project. By assisting with looking at septic, you know, analysis, or we can. Assist in some way to bring down the cost of that project, I think, is a positive thing. So that, because right now it's just, it is so expensive and we all know that, right? To do anything, especially in. If you're down where our highest density areas are. Now you're subject to. All the other restrictions, the coastal management, all these different things that are going to prohibit in terms of what you build and how you build it, so. I think this could be a positive resource to help assist people. And with the goal being that that we're going to provide community benefit and community benefit is creating more affordable housing in our town. I agree with you, Bruce, that driving up taxes. Hurts affordability, but we give tax benefits to residents that we all pay for, right? We did that with Wellington. We gave a tax abatement for Wellington. That's, we're all bearing the burden of sharing that.
And we have a senior tax freeze and we do, but that but that can't have a, that can't be a bottomless. Option for us. I'm not trying to say this would be that at all, but I want to just amplify a point that you picked up, Peggy, because I think it's a great one. And that is the affordability for people who work in Madison. But can't maybe afford to live here. And I think that that has to be sort of the. The 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 North Star of the affordable development as we move forward. That the 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 folks that work in Madison and want to live in Madison. Really need to be given the first consideration. In this, and and what we have to do to make that happen, I think we should.
Well, and I think that our board needs to set out what those North Stars are because it would help the Affordable Housing Committee understand that, right? Because I think right now everybody's. You know, and we've had projects where we didn't have that North Star, right? Wellington being an example, right? So we kind of learned from that project. And so now I think as we look at even our own town property, I think our board should set out. Some objectives for what we want to see. And and I think specifically, even to your point, Bruce. What's that number? Is there a magic number? No, I mean, we've all not liked the fair share housing stuff that came out of Hartford, right? We're not looking, but I think we have to be realistic about. What is achievable for us and 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 not. Be focused on metrics that the state is imposing, but what we think is realistic and pragmatic, right? And so I think it would be a good discussion. With the assistance of the Affordable Housing Committee to help us do that, like, so that at least we can tell the public. Because I think there's a lot of fear out there, right? Every time affordable housing comes up, they're going to turn us into Branford and they're going to make a million condos and then. We're going to have all these low-income housing developments in town. I think it would help us, I think, progress us on this issue if maybe we laid out some sort of like goals and objectives of the board. Realistic goals of what we think is attainable. And when we get that, I think the the that would be very helpful when we get that report back from the facilities committee. That looks at the town can take the lead, right? Here's our goals and here's some areas in town that we could actually do this with town on property. And then we can match those up. I think it would help us, so. So I would think that.
Doesn't doesn't that some of that stuff, I think maybe we just need to dust off the affordable housing plan that they put together, right? I think a lot of those thoughts. And ideas and strategies may exist already in that plan. We just may need to rethink about it a little bit in the current times.
You're right. And I think looking at what's in there, but I think being more specific, like saying our number one goal is to serve. You know, either the, you know, aging demographic in Madison downsizing, right, that have income restrictions. The work people who work here. That we want to, the workforce housing, as some places call it. So maybe we set those priorities so that it's very clear what our objectives are. If we're going to support some of these projects. But I and I'll have to go, we should all go back and I'll go back and look at the affordable housing plan too. It talked about that, but I don't know if we actually set. Now we can be more specific because we have, we've started to pull this information because we have the housing trust fund developing. We've got the parcels that the town could develop, you know. Then you got to start narrowing it in and saying, okay, what's our number? What can we do with this and what are our goals as a board to achieve? With all this work, so. So I think this is a great conversation because I agree, Bruce, I think that we need to like move it into practice, like let's get some stuff done now, right? And be more specific.
If I may, if I may say that these are tools that will help us manage development. It's right now, we don't really have those tools. We have. A developer comes into town and says, I'd like to build something and and we say, okay, does it conform with our zoning rules and all that? And if it does. You go ahead and build it. This will give you an opportunity to actually, this kind of thing, like the housing trust fund. It also could very well help us in terms of being able to get a waiver in eight thirty G, I mean, among other things, which would be kind of helpful.
Yeah, and I think also looking at the the eight thirty G waivers, but I think. but I think also just looking at funding mechanisms, and I think we should have a further conversation, you know? If it's not going to be developer fees, like if we don't want to do what maybe Fairfield or other towns have done, but let's look at our building permits. We get a lot, we get a lot of revenue that come in. Maybe we'd say that half of our building permit fees go into this fund. You know, that's not taxing, but it, you know, all that revenue does is it does offset the mill rate. Ultimately, it goes into the general fund, so it helps the town coffers, right? But maybe it's building permits, you know, or, you know, maybe there's where you can get at least a, a small stream of income to build up into there, so we're not having to appropriate into it. That would allow for, you know, planning analysis or, you know, or, you know, waiving certain fees. That's another thing, we could have a policy where the, or the fee goes into this, or we waive certain fees for different types of projects. I mean, building fees are expensive when you really look at it. And I know that's been hard, you know, and then going through the whole planning process to get approvals costs money. You know, Aaron, I mean, these people are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? When they come in with proposals and site plans and architects and, you know.
Project, yeah.
Yeah. So, but anyway, I know, good conversation. I think this is what, what we should be talking about. And, you know, and I know it's been frustrating for the committee, we haven't made more progress. But at the same point, I think it's, we have to bring everybody with us, along with us, right? And there's all these different pieces that have been being worked on separately. And now is an opportunity to kind of start bringing them together. And for us to kind of make some progress in this area, I think. So I appreciate your committee, Mark, and I know you've had a few people that had to step off. So we do have some vacancies, I think, if anybody, if members of the public are passionate about this. Please reach out to the Board of Selectmen, put in an application, because we do have several vacancies now in, in, in the committee. And I know it seems slow for you guys, but you can hear how complicated the issue is, right? And we all have our own differing opinions on how fast and how big and everything that the town should go in this direction. So, but I think this is a nice symbolic step that could really help, you know, just help further some things move along in, in town. So any other comments, board members, or? Nope, good. Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. Next item on the agenda is discuss and take action to approve the Town of Addison entering into an agreement with the Madison Foundation for the Meals on Wheels program.
We're moved.
Second.
So this, we talked about this at our last meeting. This is a opportunity to start building up a bigger, I guess, endowment is really what it would be for the Meals on Wheels program. We're kind of running down on our funding. Don't worry, if you're getting Meals on Wheels, this will continue, but this is, we're trying to be forward thinking and prepare for when that endowment money that we had is, is completed. I know Austin, I mean, Austin, we can invite him up. Any, any questions on this? This is just, and this was reviewed by council. This is just setting up one of those structures like we did with the Madison two hundred committee, you know, for people to make donations and, and through the Madison Foundation.
No need to discuss on my end. I think this is great. This is a great step and the right stuff.
Great. The, just, just to be clear for anybody that's, that's going to watch this or is watching this, we're not actually putting money in this, we're just creating the administration for the funds. We're, we're still going to be managing it out of the senior center. Austin's still got this as one of his many millions tasks, many millions of tasks. But this is just an efficient way of managing the funds moving forward.
Any other comments, Austin?
I, I've said I would support and I continue to say that, you know, if, if we need to create a budget item for this as part of our, our, our annual operating budget planning, I, I really think we should do that.
Yeah, that, thank you. And this is just a, you know, another mechanism for us to, you know, access the public. And if they want to participate in helping the program, this is just a way for them to be able to do that. And, and write it off as a taxable donation as well.
Great. Well, I think, I think we're all good. We talked about this in order to last meeting, this is just the actual agreement. So if there's no further questions, all in favor of approving the agreement, say aye.
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 Aye? Okay, great. All right. So Austin, you can kind of get, I'll get this signed and we'll, we'll get this moving, which is great. And maybe we talk to Maddie about, you know, QR codes and pushing it a little bit, you know? People want to make donations to support it, we could do that.
Yeah, there's, there's already a twenty thousand dollar contribution that the foundation will be making available to us when needed.
Okay, great.
Amazing.
Curious, have you seen any uptick at all with all the, you know, economic concerns and this, the funding, you know, the government shutdown? Have you seen an uptick in people requesting Meals on Wheels or has it been pretty steady?
Yeah, so last year we did ten thousand one hundred and five and this year we're on pace to do about a thousand more than last year. So yeah, there's, there's an uptick, could be for a variety of reasons. You know, aging population, more people staying at home, surgeries, et cetera. There's a, you know, a slew of reasons why people go on Meals on Wheels. But definitely, you know, the increase in, in food costs at the supermarket is, is one of them. Yeah, it's, there's a, definitely a variety of, of reasons why people go on Meals on Wheels for a very short time, a very long time. It kind of runs the gamut, but.
Are there guidelines of, of, you know, how somebody might qualify for Meals on Wheels? I mean, is there ever, ever a reason why you might turn somebody away, I guess, is, is the real question, but.
So, yeah, the, the one guideline is we need a doctor's note. So, you know, is it a extreme venture for you to leave the house? Are you having a surgery that limits your ability to stand at a stove? Should you not be using a stove? Should, can you not cook for yourself? But the, the doctor's note is kind of the, the key marker that we request. And, you know, most of the time that happens, some doctors don't agree that the person needs Meals on Wheels and it would be better for them not to get it. But, you know, ninety-five percent of the time, it's the people asking for it are in, in, in need of it and, and would qualify.
Yeah, that's super helpful. Thanks.
So I know you're on for the cemetery discussion, you just want to hang on. We got item number eleven, I know. Or ten, excuse me. We got two items. So we just voted, we voted on the agreement, so we're good there. Item number ten is discuss and take action to.
Did we, did we vote on it? I don't think we.
Yeah, we voted.
Oh, we did?
No, I think, yeah, we voted, yep. And, and then I just threw in a question and all of a sudden opened up a whole conversation. So it's like.
That was during discussions, I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah, no, that's okay. Item number ten is discuss and take action to approve a return of a hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars from the CIP residual project balances to the master account in the CNRE fund pending Board of Finance approval.
So moved?
Second.
So this is, you know, great work from the facilities department, finding and, and all departments, obviously, that have these projects, but sometimes there's just extraneous pieces where we get things that cost less than what we budgeted. Doesn't happen all the time, but we always love it when it does happen. And so the balances kind of get swept up into the general CNRE fund. So that's all this is. I don't know if there's any further questions. But that, I think you got a list in the packet. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. So that does pass. Item number eleven is discuss and take action to per recommendation from facilities to award Gilbane the GMP proposal for the HVAC Electrical Gym Project and authorizing the First Selectman to sign all documents related to this award. Can I get a?
So I'll move it with the amendment that we insert Polson HTRAC. We didn't identify the facility.
Oh, okay, yeah, I know it's talked about in the memo, but, so I will second your amendment. So the amended motion now is on the floor. So with that woven up for discussion, I always forget procedures on this, but go ahead, Ben. So just explain real brief, excited to see this move forward.
Yeah, I was like, hey, tap me in, I'll talk about it.
Yeah.
No, this is, this is a big one, so kind of the, the five, thirty second financial overview.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of important to have Polson in there, you're right, Bruce. So everybody knows this is finally happening, so go ahead.
So the, when we re-scope this Polson HVAC Electrical, it's a very long title because it's kind of a little bit of everything, but HVAC upgrades, electrical upgrade of the building, auditorium renovation, gym renovation. The total construction budget for the project was twenty-one million, let's call it twenty-one point eight million dollars. Back in January, Gilbane did a construction document phase estimate when the plans were nearly complete. They came in at eighteen point two million. So provided the actual construction cost came in at or under the estimate, that would leave about three point five million dollars. And the intention there was whatever is the residual from this project will continue on to knock projects out on that kind of four-year Polson renewal plan. So we get this one done first, see what's left over and then just start moving down that list. So we did make an equipment pre-purchase with this project. It was three, one point three million dollars, that's for the generator, the transfer switch, the ATS. Those items are all on order. So the remaining construction budget was about twenty and a half million. So from that point, we finished all the, the project construction documents over the summer. Gilbane went out to bid as the construction manager on this project. They, they, they run the bid process, they actually split the massive construction documents up into ten bid packages for all the different trades, very similar approach to what was done at Neck River Elementary. And they get bids back, just like we do on any of our projects. It was just times ten in this. And then what they do is they, they have scope review meetings, so they go to the lowest qualified responsible bidder. If there are issues with that bid, they may go to the next bidder. So on the last update I gave you guys, I kind of was here, where, here's where we were. If we took all the low bidders, which almost never happens, here's who we are with the second, here's an average. You know, we went through that whole analysis. So where we ended up, I sat in on several of these scope review meetings, they're, they're very thorough. Gilbane does a great job in really vetting these contractors, so there's no question, they're recorded. So there is no like, oh, I didn't know that was part of the scope. They're, they are on the record. We actually had to disqualify one vendor because in that meeting, they, they basically admitted that they missed something. So it's a, it's a very thorough process. And Gilbane takes those proposals and they aggregate them together for each one of their recommended bidders. And they add their general conditions and their, what they call site services, which are everything that, that Gilbane's services that they provide onsite to keep the project moving. We already had a sneak peek at those because way back in twenty twenty-four, when Gilbane, when we first signed on with Gilbane, they had given us estimates of those costs and, and they were right there. So aggregate the trade bids, put in Gilbane's costs on the top of it, put a two point one five percent fee on the top of that, which is the same as they used for Neck River. And where we end up is a guaranteed maximum price contract amendment of four, just a little over fourteen million dollars. So including the equipment pre-purchase, our total construction cost here is fifteen point three, which is two point eight seven under the CD phase estimate. This is how it's supposed to work. It's not supposed to be higher.
More of these.
Yeah, 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 this is, this is, this is, this is good. So we're, we're well within the overall project budget here. And so if, if the project was built for that fifteen three, if there were zero change orders on the project, we utilized all the construction major contingency on it, that, those, those are not plausible situations. There are going to be changes on the project when you dig into an old building like this. But, but if we did, it would leave post-project six point four million dollars available to fund future projects. The next one up would be the roof replacement, which is five point nine. So I, sometimes it's a downfall, but I'm always thinking two or three projects down the road. So our incentive to keep this project cost contained on it is so we could do the next one. But back to that, that's next year's problem. This project would start in late January, early February of twenty twenty-six, actual construction would start. We've worked the logistics plan through the school to, to get traffic patterns near the CAF and everything. We're really limiting disruption on this project, we talked about that before. That was a guiding factor in this whole process, because we're working on an occupied building. Summer hits, it is off to the races, going to be a crazy summer, doing all the HVAC work, getting our generator in, getting the electrical cut over to, to put the building back to a usable state for the start of school. The auditorium is going to be offline through the end of twenty twenty-six and the main gymnasium is going to be offline through the end of November twenty twenty-six. Thanks to Gilbane, we, we actually moved up the deadline on the gym a month to accommodate some athletic events. And they were able to, to weave that into their schedule. So building committee reviewed this in detail back last week on eleven four. They support this plan and recommend the GMP, which is in front of you now, so happy to take any questions.
Just, well done. I know we were really concerned two years ago, right? Or a year, a year ago about this project and I want to give Ben the credit he deserves to really digging in and coming up with, especially on the HVAC side. That's where I think we identified a better way to do this, it was going to be more cost efficient. And, and when, you know, and, and so to be in a position where we're getting everything we need and then we might even have, be able to do some other stuff that we know was weighing down the capital plan with that budget, I think is fantastic. So, and finally, the auditorium. I know that's going to be, I know that's the most visible thing, I think, people. Obviously, the kids are going to notice better air conditioning and better air quality in their, in their school. But, you know, I think the auditorium is a big visible symbol, you know? And so we're just excited that that's going to be happening and, and next year, finally, so thank you.
Amazing, Ben, thanks.
Any other questions or comments now?
We may have to give more, you know, more than twenty-five K back per year now, Ben, because of all the things you're doing, so be careful.
Setting a very high, high bar. So with that, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, great. So excited to see that move forward, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
So item number twelve, I think Jeannie had sent around, we don't have to spend a lot of time talking to the day, but, because I didn't get as much research done as I'd hoped before this. But so we had a conversation about, you know, cemetery management in town, right? And some are private cemetery associations, some are town owned. Hammond Asset, which is our, I think our oldest or second oldest cemetery in town, has really been in a limbo land, so to speak, right? Because the association is kind of defunct, it's not a functioning association that's managing it. And the town doesn't technically have control over Hammond Asset either. And so I feel like we're at a point now, because we have a lot of people coming into the town clerk's office, asking about burial plots, you know, asking about availability or old deeds, you know, people bought plots in the nineteen eighties or something and for their grandparents or, you know, and there's an extra. So we don't really have good mapping and I don't want to, you know, scare the public and I don't mean it in that way. But I think if we want to really get the records in better shape and really have a more formal management structure for the cemetery, we would need to go through this state process that would require us to kind of take it over as a, I, I don't want to call it, it's not derelict, it's maybe defunct. And, and maybe Jeannie, I know she had done some research on this. I think, Jeannie, did you send out that memo to the board when we talked about it Monday? I can't remember if it got sent out.
I believe I did, yes.
Okay, so, so there's a process that we would go through with the state to kind of take this officially over and then we can apply for a grant where they could go in and do mapping and things like that so that we can get things more formalized, I think, and a, a better management structure for the, for the cemetery. So I think it would make town clerk's life easier. You know, there's been a lot of inquiries into the Selectman's Office about this and it might just put people more at ease. So it would be a process this board would take up. And Jeannie, can you? And Genie, can you remind me what the process is? Don't we just have to like post it in the paper? Like vote on some sort of?
I'd have to refresh my memory.
Okay, so we'll we'll get on, I'll come back with like more details if the board is open to this. I I, you know, of like the steps that we would need to be taking. I don't think it's a lot. I I don't know if it's an ordinance. I don't think it's an ordinance. I can't remember. It's some sort of, you know, something we would be voting on to declaration and then we would have to do public notice for that so that people are aware we were taking this step.
Like eminent domain, is it? Like, we're not taking it like that way, are we?
I I I don't know legally. I can't, you know, we had this conversation a while back with Carrie. No, it's not eminent domain, but it's it it doesn't mean you would lose your plot deed or whatever. It just means the town is going to be more formally taking over rather than a cemetery association. It would be the town. So and Austin, I mean, remind, maybe if you want to remind like what the town currently does, right? In terms of cemeteries, maybe that's just helpful to put it in context.
Is this one too, by the way, boss? Where where is where is Hammo?
This is over by River Road.
You're on mute. You're on mute.
There's always one. River Road.
Tom River Road. Okay, okay, thanks.
So out of the six cemeteries in town, we as the town are responsible for four of them. Three of them being the entirety of the cemetery. West Cemetery, the town is responsible for the historic section, the section closest to to Route One, not the interior part. So the Indian Cemetery at Camp Laurelwood, Rockland Cemetery, both of which have no space. West Cemetery, our part, the historic part, no space. And the Hammond Asset Cemetery, which we're talking about now, you know, minimal, if any, space for for purchasing. And then the other two remaining, which are privately run, are the Summer Hill Cemetery and West Side Cemetery. Summer Hill is on Route eighty and West Side is on Race Hill Road.
So we're already maintaining Hammond Asset now, right? But we aren't technically the stewards of it, I guess.
Correct. We hire a sexton to maintain the facilities at at the cemetery. So mowing, maintenance, et cetera, we are responsible for any repairs. So fencing gates, et cetera, that that we would we would pay for. And I have a a line item in my budget for all of that. But mostly what we pay for is the the mowing. Any burials are the responsibility of the the family and that goes to the sexton for the work required to to do the burial.
So I think that this would basically mean that you would come to the town officially about purchasing a plot if there were spaces available. And we would be the maintainer of records. I mean, right now we have a collection of records that was part of the, I I forget the family name, that basically oversaw that cemetery for many years, right? And, you know, there's no official record keeper, I guess, really, right? So some of them are deeded and 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 the town clerk's office, some of them aren't. So I think it just, and it's a historic cemetery for us, so I feel like we need to do it right, you know, and make sure that it's being, you know, recorded properly and and all that. We certainly are maintaining it. That's why I don't like the term der. I know there was some term with the state legislation about derelict. It's not that it's derelict, it's just more about record keeping and I think of responsibility.
This is more of a formality, right? In in the sense that we're already doing all the work anyway, so.
Yeah, right, right. So.
Yes, I think the the real, the real thing is once a a private, if you will, cemetery is no longer you know, in existence, so the the owner of the cemetery or the person responsible for the the maintenance of the cemetery is no longer the responsible party. The town in which the cemetery is located is then becomes responsible. So, yeah, this is not one hundred percent not a derelict cemetery. It's beautiful, historic. It's it's a really interesting place to visit. But by no stretch is it is it derelict. So Austin, we are responsible in perpetuity, even though we may not have collected any fees at the time of the burial. Is is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that and that's a state statute, I think, about it, that it has to, you know, ultimately, there has to be some sort of public responsibility, right, for these places? So so I'll I'll come back with the specifics of what we would be doing in the process. I just think, you know, it's time to do that. And I'm trying to think, it it was, and I and apologies if somebody from the family is watching, but I think this kind of all started, cemetery association kind of stopped being actively managed. I would say probably like, you know, seven or eight years ago, maybe ten years ago. So it's not like this has been like this for decades. It's it's more of like the last ten years. So that's why we we bend, we took it over. And I know we have a lot of records that were given to us. But we just don't, I just think it's better to have the formal authority and clarity about what the town's role is in this. So so that we can kind of, you know, going forward, manage it the way we should, it should be managed. So I will come back with more specifics and and what that would look like, what we would need to do as a board. And like I said, we're already paying for the upkeep, so it shouldn't have a budgetary impact at all. And it's just, you know, giving us authority, the proper authority. Any other questions? No? Okay, all right, great. So thank you, Austin, for that. So we'll we'll follow up with that and bring back a more detailed kind of transfer plan. Item number thirteen is discuss and take action to approve the twenty twenty-six Board of Selectmen meeting schedule.
They're moved?
Okay.
Okay, so we kind of landed, I think, because of different conflicts I had and other board members had going forward in the new year, our regular meeting is going to be moving to I forget now, was it?
That Wednesday morning?
No, four PMs on, four PM on Tuesdays. That'll be our Zoom-only meeting. Four PM on Tuesday. What am I looking? I'm looking at the budget workshop schedule. Sorry.
Our eight AM meetings is what we're we're not doing.
Yeah, so where's the actual? Oh, it's the, okay, they were just in a different order. That's what I was looking for. Yeah, so we're doing the four o'clock on Tuesday. So that will, and just for the public's benefit, we find it's helpful to do some more administrative stuff. We try to do that on these Zoom-only meetings and then have like big public topics at the Monday night meetings. It doesn't always work out that way, but we do try to kind of follow that a little bit. And and so we'll we'll stick to this and and starting in the new year, it'll be Tuesdays at four o'clock. So is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, great. So we got the new schedule. We can get that. That'll be good. And then Genie will kind of send out meeting invites with the updated schedules. We'll get the the calendar populated and all that. The next one is the budget workshop schedule, which I know is always challenging because the Board of Finance, we have new members. But at least we could, I don't know if we want to wait until they've seen this. Or do we want to approve it and then we could always?
Is it adjusted, right?
I, yeah, I'm almost like, why don't we let them see this? Because if we're good with this, why don't we just send it to the Board of Finance, not vote on it and let them look at it? Because they might need to modify something in here. And then we can just vote on, you know, once we get feedback from them.
True, because you have new members and stuff too, so.
Yeah, so we could, so Stacy, you could just say that the board has endorsed this, but we just won't vote on it until they've looked at it. Because we got to make sure it works with them. But I will highlight that we are planning on a April twenty-eighth referendum date. So for the first time, we will have our budget referendum in April, which was one of the goals of the charter review, to give us more flexibility and pull that forward. Most towns do have their budget referendums in April. So this schedule is a little more compressed, but I think it's very efficient. And and then it'll be our first Tuesday, April twenty eighth, will be our referendum date that we're working towards. Okay?
So this this is not a budget item per se, but the policy discussion around the surf club. If we could make room for that somewhere in the next month or two.
About the beach stickers?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's not a budget fine item, right? Or 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 maybe it would become a budget line item because we have to pay for the stickers. But but other than that, it's really a bigger policy decision.
Yeah, I think we should maybe start that conversation in December and then we do set the fees. Our board does vote on the fees, so that is important and we'd want to have all that ironed out before the summer season, right? We start selling beach stickers like April first, I think. So I know that.
Is Beach and Rec gonna, are they gonna start looking at it before us? It'd be nice if they came to us with some ideas, too.
Yeah, so we we talked about it in the last Beach and Rec non-meeting because we didn't have a quorum. So they're aware of it and there was some discussion about it. And they're going to come back, but I think generally there wasn't objection to it. I think there were questions, rightly so.
You strong-armed him, didn't you?
I I, Austin, if he's on, he can come back on and he can attest that that I encourage them to openly disagree with me.
All right, very good.
If if that's how they they felt. The, I think, the only real deadline on the conversation is is the date that the stickers have to be ordered by.
Yeah.
That's that's sort of the the biggest working deadline. So and that's, I think, probably February-ish, I think. Austin, I'd start shouting if if I've got that wrong. But but yeah, that that's that's kind of the working deadline would be the 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 order date for the stickers.
Well, and I think the, you know, we're by, I think we start selling them April first, which is, you know, two months before they're needed, so we have a little flexibility. I know some people are eager beavers and they get their sticker first thing and but they're not needed till Memorial Day. So so we'll we'll target, though, a conversation in December. Okay, to on one of the meetings in December to talk about that. So, okay, any other? Yep, I guess citizens' comments then. Any any hands raised? If you have a comment, you can raise your hand.
Yes, Matt Corden.
Okay. Go ahead, Matt.
Hey, good morning, everyone. You know, thank you for having this meeting this morning. Just going back to the affordable housing. One thing that is kind of, it's a an issue for me is we talk about the people that work in Madison and and making housing available to them. But we don't really know what that demand is. It's really a nebulous statement because we don't know how many people, even as a snapshot, right here and now, want that work here, want to actually move to Madison. And we use that as a principle. So I I think possibly it would, there's an opportunity for us to try to measure that. You know, we could poll teachers and police officers and the people that work here to see what really would be that demand. So I I encourage or suggest that we take a look at that.
Okay, great thought. Any other hands raised? No? Okay, with that, then, I guess, you know, meeting, if I hearing no objection, a meeting is adjourned. So thank you, everybody. Have a great day. Thank you.